Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the May 19, 2015 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to Order. And I would like a roll call, please.
This evening present are Mr. Slavin, Mr. Troppiano, Mrs. Whiteside, Mr. Titlebaum. Mr. Sullivan will not be here this evening.
Okay. And now we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. And Chris will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
My pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, next, we're gonna do a gentleman who I admired and, I don't know, spent some time with over the years, fireworks at his house. He was big into Veterans Affairs. One of the nicest guys you ever want to meet, in fact. You know, he never had a bad word to say about anybody. He had like a personality that anybody in the world could approach and talk to him. You know, he passed away, and I just think we need to give him a minute of silence, and that's Ted DeMoulin. He just was an awesome man, and I can't say enough about him, to be honest with you. So can we have a moment of silence for Ted, please? That's a man that will be sorely missed, trust me. All right. We're gonna do announcements first, and then we're gonna do the library thing, okay?
I have a couple of aphorisms. That's gonna be my new thing. "This country will not be a good place for any of us to live in unless we make it a good place for all of us to live in." That was Theodore Roosevelt. And Margaret Mead said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has." It's an update on the Memorial Day celebration. On Friday, the, some of the schoolchildren from the Wareham Middle School are going to be decorating each of the town cemeteries, as well as St. Patrick's Cemeteries, with flags. The Veterans Council has been very busy making sure that the medallions are on each of the veterans' graves. Arthur Lee, Tom Bronk, and John Campbell have been putting wreaths on the bridges and other places in town. It's a rain-or-shine activity on Monday. Nine o'clock, St. Patrick's Cemetery. There will be a service, a short speech, a firing of, a salute, and then we will move to the other cemeteries. So nine o'clock, St. Patrick, and at Center Cemetery, 10 o'clock, Agawam Cemetery. Oh, excuse me, those are the, those are the flag placing at times. The day of Memorial Day, we will start at nine o'clock in the morning in the center, green in the middle of town, and go from there, visiting the different places that the council has decided that they will visit. I'd like to announce that Michelle Montreux, who is retiring this year from her 35-year career as an educator in Wareham, is the winner of the Loretta Quinlan Award. It's an extremely prestigious award given in Plymouth County to the person who's deemed to be the best schoolteacher for that year. Congratulations to Michelle. On Saturday, May 23rd, from noon to 2:00 p.m. at Onset Pier, for $15 donation, you can come and fly a freedom dove. A freedom dove is really not a live bird. It's a pillow-shaped balloon, and it is ecologically okay, I guess. The money is going to be used to pay for the fireworks. There is a rain date of Sunday, the 24th, and again, that's from noon to 2:00 p.m. at Onset Pier. This week, WCTV's Coffee Hour doesn't have a guest, but they do still have coffee and doughnut holes, and they're really good. Tomorrow at 8:00 in the morning, Priscilla Porter, Friends of the Wareham Free Library, is going to be on the Good Morning Show. And the Don't Trash Wareham Project is well underway with many local organizations, the middle school, the high school, and many caring individuals ready to hit the streets on May 30th and 31st for the townwide cleanup. We have a Facebook page, and our website is not quite up, but the website, I mean, the Facebook page has gotten a lot of likes. We are going to be supplying gloves and bags to different neighborhoods, and we hope that everyone in Wareham will take an hour or two on one of those two days and just pick stuff up, get rid of it, okay? And I think that is it, because the announcements about the library are gonna be done under my liaison report.
Peter?
This is maybe a little bit different in the context of announcements, but I'll start off with an announcement. And that is that in addition to the town of Wareham getting funding along with the City of New Bedford to fight opioid abuse, the Turning Point Recovery Organization has just received a significant grant as well to help Wareham and other towns in the region. And I just wanna make an observation about this problem that's mushrooming into a huge problem statewide. There was a Boston Globe report recently that listed Wareham as fourth in the state in overdose deaths per capita. Obviously, for a town our size, we don't have a big sample size, so a couple of fewer deaths and maybe we would've been 50th. But the point remains, this is a very serious problem in our community, and it's very easy for people who have never experienced addiction, who have never seen addicts in their families, who have never had friends who have been lost to drug use, to condemn addicts. When you see a photo in Wareham Week of a mother who's been arrested in her apartment with somebody else and three children, it's very easy to heap scorn upon that person. I would say to the people who do this, there but for the grace of God go you and I. And I would ask that rather than try to condemn these people, that we join hands, try to identify them in our neighborhoods, in our families, and try to get them the help that they need to try to recover and regain useful and productive lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Alan?
I'd like to thank Peter for bringing those pieces up. We've been working on these grants for probably close to a year. It was really great to see that Wareham involved with three to four other communities and two separate grants got approved. Our police chief, Kevin Walsh, has been instrumental in being very proactive with these particular organizations to help us get this, and he has programs lined up, so this money will come in real handy. I think there was some misinformation given out, at least through one of our local papers, through their website, about the Cape Flyer. I think there was an article about saying that Channel 25, Fox News, had said that 'cause of the little use of traffic in Wareham and in Buzzards Bay that there'd be no Cape Flyer stopping there. I don't know where it came from. Obviously, the people who run Cape Flyer don't know either, but it would be nice that people actually try and get proper facts before putting it out there.
Just, that was a blogger. That wasn't, that was a blogger who wrote on a story that this was taking place. It was not through the actual paper itself.
I understand, but...
So I just wanna make that clear, that we're not condemning the press.
I am condemning the paper for putting stuff in there and not making sure it's correct.
Well, I don't think they monitor.
I think it's, it's time that self-responsibility blogging starts to be responsible, and the papers need to be responsible for that as well. Because actually, it made a comment, and then the person put a note about it, saying that this was a fact. It was an article, I believe yesterday's paper, that talked about the Cape Flyer, and they published that blogger piece below it, which was done five days earlier. So I have no, I'm not gonna give them any slack whatsoever in that.
Well, I think, I think what you saw yesterday was somebody responding to the first blog piece that said they'd seen Channel 25, so I think actually that person was trying to set the record straight.
If you, if you looked at it, again, I'm just saying, it said May 14th, and the article was done May 18th.
It's all right.
I just wanna make a point, I haven't finished yet.
Yeah, we get your point. Go ahead.
We have also, as I said, the Cape Flyer. We do have, I've mentioned before, that our militia is gonna be there on the 22nd for the event itself. I have some other stuff that I'll wait till the actual reports later on.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and I'm all set. So I see that the...
Can you do citizens first?
No.
I'm gonna do that.
I'm gonna do after. I see that the folks from our Harbor Masters office have come in. Why don't you come down? This is gonna go under any other town business not reasonably anticipated in the last 48 hours, and that's because we didn't get this until late, and it really doesn't affect our gender at all because of the fact that we're just making a proclamation, there's no, so come on down.
Those of you that'd like to wear some jackets. National Safe Boating Week.
I'd rather die first. This is about National Safe Boating Week, so...
Are those, are these the extra, extra lodges?
You got the jumbo jumbos?
It goes on the other way, Julie.
We got a few.
How many west?
What are you doing, Alan?
The guy's on the boat that took me in from Utah down there.
Yeah, look at, they gotta open the buckle button.
They know what it is.
We're gonna have to work on these.
Yeah, they're gonna have to be...
Somebody was very quick to pull the buckle seal.
How did you do that?
What?
Well, there's wood to open it. You open the sides.
We're gonna get the buckles here.
Do the sides.
Jane.
Alan, you're doing it wrong.
No shit. All right. Nice job, Alan.
How about that?
Oh, we love this stuff.
There we go.
Yeah, this, I think...
Alan!
No, no, we got Alan.
Oh, oh, of course, plenty of room.
There we go. Turn the outside.
All right, you guys all...
Don't worry, dial those in, you can't break them.
I can't?
No, can't.
All right.
Still not looking great here.
All right, so you, so we're gonna make a little proclamation here, and the clerk will read it into the record. So you're gonna have Peter do it. Mr. Speed Reader.
Are you ready?
Yeah, I'll read it. Give me the proclamation.
Go for it, Peter.
Yeah, I'm not gonna really speed read this one, because people should listen to the content. This isn't just some routine blah-blah that we're trying to go through.
All right, go for it.
Town of Wareham, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571. A proclamation, National Safe Boating Week 2015. Whereas America's waterways are conduits to creating lasting memories, to discovering worlds of adventure, and to generating economic opportunity. On our rivers, lakes, and oceans, a father brings his daughter fishing for the first time. A young man learns his ancestor's trade. A family takes a hard-earned vacation, and a captain cares for her prized vessel. During National Safe Boating Week, we remember that protecting the promise of our waterways rests on each of us. Whereas, before embarking on any journey on the water, Americans should prepare for potential hazards by remembering to check the forecast, filing a float plan with a family member or friend, performing a vessel safety check, and confirming their boat has essential safety equipment and communication tools, including life jackets, fire extinguishers, and weather radios. Operators should also be ready for sudden weather changes that can affect a voyage. Fog, thunderstorms, and wind shifts can occur without warning, and knowing how to respond to dangerous weather can save lives. By always wearing life jackets and never drinking while boating, boaters and passengers can further ensure their safety and well-being, and help guarantee a great day out on the water does not end in tragedy. Whereas, at times disaster still strikes even when we are prepared. But thanks to the courageous women and men who serve our nation and protect our waters, the United States Coast Guard stands always ready to help keep Americans safe at sea. As we look forward to spending time with loved ones this summer and taking advantage of all our scenic waterways have to offer, I encourage everyone to visit www.uscgboating.org. Once again, www.uscgboating.org, to learn more about responsible boating. Together, we can enjoy the beauty and bounty of the water and avoid preventable injuries and property damage. Whereas, in recognition of the importance of safe boating practices, the Congress, by joint resolution approved June 4th, 1958, 36, United States Code, Section 131, as amended, has authorized and requested the President to proclaim annually the seven-day period prior to Memorial Day weekend as, quote, "National Safe Boating Week," unquote. Now, therefore, we, the Wareham Board of Selectmen and the citizens of Wareham, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim, May 16th through May 22nd, 2015, as National Safe Boating Week. We encourage all Americans who participate in boating activities to observe this occasion by learning more about safe boating practices and taking advantage of boating education. And witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands this 19th day of May in the year of our Lord 2015. Executed and proclaimed this 19th day of May 2015, Patrick G. Troppiano, Chairman, Judith Whiteside, Clerk, Stephen M. Holmes, Alan A. Slavin, Peter W. Titlebaum. And thank you to the Harbor Masters Department.
We're not wearing these for the rest of the meeting, are we? Give me a break.
Let's see you sit down with one.
You only need to know one word, mayday.
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 Give you mayday.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And as everybody knows, Wareham is, got a lot of water, so it's real big for us, right?
The record will show that Mr. Holmes has arrived at 7:18.
Hello, Mr. Holmes. Welcome.
Thanks. Did you get my message?
Uh, I didn't.
Did I text you?
No.
Did you just do it, uh, while I was...
Oh, I probably didn't look. I did now.
Sorry.
I did now.
The doctor...
I got it now. Sorry. I just didn't look.
Doctor was running late.
All right. There you go. All right, so next, we're gonna move around a little bit on this, the next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna bring up Priscilla Porter. Come on, Priscilla. We're gonna do this under liaison reports as Ms. Whiteside's liaison, because we might wanna convince a little, and this way we can.
So this is my liaison report to the Wareham Public Library, the Friends of the Wareham Free Public Library trustees, and the foundation. Priscilla Porter.
Thank you. I've come about two things, and I see you all have your ducks, but first, which I appreciate you having those.
Somebody took the squeaker out of mine.
I'll tell you, there was one little boy that wanted to know if he could put a motor on his duck for the race, and we told him that we didn't encourage that. But first, I wanna talk about the book sale coming up next weekend. It'll be Thursday, the 28th, is 5:00 to 7:00. Friday, 10:30 to 4:30, and Saturday, 10:30 to 1:00 p.m. But at the same time, we are doing our book sale on Saturday, we are also part of Don't Trash Wareham, and we are going to be cleaning the ware, the library grounds, all the area around it, the playground, and I think Memorial Park is being cleaned at the same time. What the Friends would like to do is offer those that come to clean on Saturday a coupon to get a free book at our used book sale. They may not be able to clean and pick out a book, so the coupon would be good at any future used book sale.
Oh, very nice.
Fabulous idea.
So, um, yeah, hey...
That's good encouragement.
We all have to do our part, and it's important that every, the town looks good. Better it looks, more people might come in, and we'll sell more books.
You will be supplied with bags and gloves.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, at that ti, at that same day, the Children's Library and Marsha Hickey is going to do a duck storytime, and at the conclusion of the storytime, there will be an activity which is buy your duck and decorate it for...
I think you didn't decorate our ducks.
Oh, yes, we encourage decorating. We are good...
Judy was supposed to decorate our ducks, and she...
Oh, all right. We're going to have a best duck decorated contest, so you'll get a prize if your duck is the best decorated. We'll probably do an adult and a child since, um, probably think, but anyway, we will have prizes when we have races, but after that, the next big event is June 14th, the rubber duck race. Registration will start at 1:00. The race is at 2:00. We will do it in groups, probably children kind of age groups, and then adults, and we are encouraging adults. We would like it to be a fun family day for everybody. We have a donation of music, so we'll have music part of the time. Prior to our duck race is the Kiwanis 5K Race. That starts at 11:00 and should be finished by 1:00, but, you know, we're kind of combining the two events, and it'll be a great day. Thai Haunted Village Store will be open, so anybody want ice cream, they have delicious ice cream. And all of this is Thai Haunted Village. The race is in the canal at the front along the road, and I, I just would love to have everybody come and have just a great time.
Awesome.
They're already armed with their ducks, all of us, so I didn't decorate them.
Yes, yes. If you'd like help decorating, come to the library on the 30th. We, we have lots of shoppies and iridescent colors that you can do your decorating.
Excellent. And can you tell us when your raffle for the quilt will be over, please?
Yes, we are going to pull the winner at the duck race.
Awesome.
So that will be June 14th, so you still have time to get your raffle tickets. I know I had the quilt here, I had it at town meeting. It is absolutely an incredible piece of work, so, and the sales are going well, and I thank you for allowing me to bring it here, because it certainly picked up on sales, and I appreciate that. And the ducks, you can buy, obviously, at the library, but they're also at Riverside Cafe, Thai Haunted Village Store, and Cape Cod Five are all selling ducks.
Great.
Awesome.
So that's my piece.
Any questions from any of the board members? Peter?
You're certainly not ducking your responsibility.
Oh, no, and I have my duck jewelry. I should show you, I have my duck jewelry, my, my duck bracelet, and this jewelry will be available. My sister does it, and we're gonna have her, and I, I don't usually practice nepotism, but I don't know anybody else that is making duck jewelry.
Yeah, that's probably true. Anybody else wanna duck in here?
So we will have that for those that would like to have it. We're gonna have some fun prizes. They're really not gonna be very serious, but they're gonna be fun.
If there's somebody in the audience who has not yet bought a raffle ticket, just hold your hand up, and she'll sell you one on her way out.
Well, I don't have tickets, but I'm... Yes, I already did from Jerry. He reminded me I didn't bring him a ticket.
Alan, anything? No? Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate you coming.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we're gonna move on to citizens' participation. Anyone here to speak to us this evening? Come on down.
I thought we were banned. The ban's on.
Yeah.
We should know why.
We're not banning anyone.
Good evening, Sandy Slavin. I just wanted people to know, we had our first meeting for the master plan. There's a committee of 14 people, three showed up. We need another attempt at this, and we need to have people identified as representing various committees and boards and departments to participate. We really need to get started on this.
All right, next, anybody else seeing none? Appointments and reappointments, Board of Road Commissioners.
The Board of Road Commissioners has one applicant, Howard A. Smith, who is not present.
He couldn't be here this evening.
He's probably out perambulating the bounds.
Probably.
I...
Large bounds.
I'm sorry?
Large bounds.
Okay. I move that we appoint Howard A. Smith of 1 Old Plate Drive, West Wareham, Mass. 02576, to the Board of Road Commissioners to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2017.
Second.
I would say that without Mr. Smith, Mr. Slavin, myself, Mr. Menard, Mrs. Slavin, would all still be in the bushes doing the perambulation.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0. All right, next up, Cemetery Commissioners.
Yes, we have one appointment to the Cemetery Commissioners. Brenda Ekstrom has asked to be reappointed, and the Cemetery Commissioners have recommended her reappointment. So I would move that Brenda Ekstrom of 64 Wychunus Avenue of Buzzards Bay, Mass. 02532, be appointed to, as a member of the Cemetery Commissioners, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. This is, her term ends in Ju, end of June of this year?
Yes.
Okay, so we're starting to do appointments for renewals?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That'll need to know.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Constables.
Constables, we have several appointments. Do you wanna do one at a time?
I, I don't think we have to. We can just read them, read their names into the record, 'cause they're all expire at the same time, so, right? We don't have to do each one of them individually, just read their names and their appointment date, and just read their names, that's all.
They're all reappointments?
Yes. These are all reappointments to terms to expire no later than June 30th, 2016, so it's a one-year appointment. I would pronounce this, Herve Vandal Jr. of 216 Rockland Street, New Bedford, Mass. 02740. Richard F. White, Post Office Box 1664, Sagamore Beach, Mass. 02562. Richard J. Coletti for Lisa Lane, East Wareham, 02538. Robert Tyrell, 12 Halloran's Way, Plymouth, Mass. William J. McCusker, 14 Ladner Lane, Wareham, Mass. 02571. Cynthia Fallis, 5 Beverly Way, Wareham, Mass. 02571. And Charles, oops, Charles T. Devlin for Cobblestone Drive, Buzzards Bay, Mass. 02532. Thomas A. Zine... Thomas A. Zine Senior, forty Harris Hill Road, East Falmouth, Mass. O two five three six. Robert J. DeLuca for Peter Cooper Drive, Wareham, Mass. O two five seven one. And all to a tr- uh, to, a term to expire no later than June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Their current terms expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, five zero zero. Okay, next up, town business discuss. All right, so this is, remember we moved, changed the fee last week? I don't know why it's on here the way it is, but that's the way it was put on, so I didn't change it. We raised the fee. Can you come down? This is about the earth removal.
And identify yourself for the record, please.
And you were going to discuss it with your client as well, I guess, so maybe you should.
Evening, John.
Maybe listen in to you a little bit first.
Okay, well, good evening, good evening for the record, John Churchill, J.C. Engineering, representing Graziano, Graziano Concrete, property owners Highland, Inc. This is a property off of Gold, uh, off of Glen Charlie Road, between basically White Island and Route twenty-five. I've explained to my client, this, uh, this, this property or this permit has been in effect since two thousand and six. They've been operating on this property for about forty-five years. If you've, you know, I think some members of the board may have had an opportunity to go out there about three, four years ago, when we did a site visit. As you can see, I mean, they're utilizing a small portion of the property that they currently own. They're currently paying taxes on this property as, as residential, developable land. It's not in forty-one A or forty-one B, they're not getting any tax exemptions. They're current with all their payments, they make the payments every, every month. Their permit allows them fifty trucks a day, they're using about five, so they're operating at ten percent of their permit, uh, capacity. So we just think that increasing the, from twenty-five cents to fifty cents is, it's a little aggressive and, and they're, you know, they're, they'd be very taken back if, if this board was trying to increase that on them. They've been taxpayers, they've been, they paid the water vitamins for water they didn't receive. They've, you know, been paying right along here, so hope the board takes that into consideration in their vote.
Okay, Ms. Whiteside?
Yes, I think I was the individual who made the motion to raise the fee. And I've since done a lot of homework on just what you stated in terms of revenue to the town instead of having it classified land, that kind of thing. Because I made that motion to increase the fee, I would like to make a motion to decrease the fee back to the twenty-five cent mark.
Second. Okay, so motion's made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Holmes to decrease the fee back to twenty-five cents.
And it's per cubic yard.
Right. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Peter.
You actually did better with her than you would with me. My motion would've been to drop it fifty cents, minus twenty cents, down to thirty cents, so you actually made out.
Thank you.
Let your client know that.
Yeah.
All credit to Selectman Whiteside.
All right, is there any, and no other discussion? I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, so it's actually four, one, zero.
So now we have to vote on the permit itself?
All right, so now the permit.
The permit is to Highland, Inc., for an earth removal permit. And do you have anything to say on it additionally?
Now, the conditions are, you know, we've been in accordance with all the conditions.
I move that town of Wareham license Highland, Inc., an earth removal permit to allow earth removal with the conditions that are attached, and there are nineteen of them, at the following address, off Glen Charlie Road, East Wareham, Mass. Permit is effective as of June sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, and expires on June sixteen, two thousand eighteen, by the order of the Board of Selectmen this nineteenth day of May, two thousand fifteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Holmes. Any discussion? Mr. Holmes, go ahead.
Just, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, just following along with the vote that we just took previous, I'm just making sure that we edit number nineteen.
I did, sir.
Okay. Got it, that's it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstaining? Okay, it's four, one, zero.
Thank you so much.
All right, John, have a good night.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, discussion with CEDAR. Sal, you wanna come down?
Good evening.
Okay, so you wanna tell us about this grant?
Yeah, we, um, we have an opportunity to apply for a grant.
Excuse me, could you identify yourselves for the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
Salvador Pina, CEDAR Director.
Jamie Repan, Senior Program Manager.
We, we have an opportunity to apply for a grant, uh, which is due July fifteenth. It's called a park grant, and we can use it to renovate a park. So, uh, one of the considerations that we had is looking at Lopes Field and trying to see if that might be an opportunity for us to use these funds. The grant requires a forty percent match, and we can match that with CPA funding, so we're here to talk to you about requesting, uh, uh, an opportunity to go before CPA to see if we can get funds for a match.
All right, any questions to the board?
Yes, can you?
Sorry. The people watching this on TV do not have in front of them what we do, so could you please explain to the viewing audience what it is specifically?
Sure. So, so the park, the park grant allows, as I mentioned, a forty percent match, so that's up to four hundred thousand dollars. So, if we, if we were, if we were to get, uh, put in six hundred thousand dollars, we could get four hundred thousand matched for a total of a million. One of the things about it is, we, obviously, we, at this point in time, we don't know the cost, so we're gonna make estimates on the cost, but we wanna be able to request up to that in the event that we are able to get those funds. At some point, we will have to go before town meeting, am I correct on that, Jamie?
In the fall.
In the fall, we would have to go before town meeting, assuming we got the grant. So, and obviously, there would be a process to go through, to do the design and for, for whatever we would end up with, and that would deter, help to determine cost. But I think at this point, like I said, the grant's due in July fifteenth, so we need to take these steps in order to just apply.
Okay, Peter?
Where this will eventually involve a, uh, an article for community preservation, are you aware that you're also gonna need to introduce this to FinCom and sort of get affirmative from them as well? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate that, yeah. We're just trying to, because we're on a, that time schedule, we wanted to hit this board as quickly as we could and then move on.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
According to your description, sir, the goals of the project are, this project aims to leverage state grant funding, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities, park grant program, with Community Preservation Act funding to completely renovate and beautify the Leonard C. Lopes Playground, two forty-eight Onset Avenue, Onset. This project would piggyback upon the estimated four hundred thousand dollar renovation of the Hines Field parking lot across the street from Lopes Playground, to be funded by CEDAR's fiscal year fifteen Community Development Block Grant. I think, um, you and I have talked at length about both Lopes and Hines as being what you see when you come in to that village from one direction. To me, four hundred thousand dollars for a parking lot, and I think I said this at the time that we okayed it, is like mind-blowing. And I'm convinced that many people in this town want the best for this town. I'm convinced of that because of the response that we've had for the Don't Trash Wareham initiative. I'm convinced of that because I see people every day working very hard on behalf of the town, and I'm not saying that you are not and your office is not, but I gotta tell you, four hundred thousand dollars for a parking lot just stabs my Republican heart right in half. And even the liberal part of me goes, I wanna, ugh. So, we don't really have an estimate. I can tell you what Lopes cost thirty, twenty-eight years ago, because as you know, I was one of the first, I put the first five dollars down on the table. So, in a ye- like a two-year cycle, you would've spent over a million dollars on four, six acres of land in one specific portion of the town. Can we, can we talk about the parking lot? I know it's really not on the table, but can we? No, can't talk about it.
I mean, I'm happy to answer questions if you have questions.
It's not really part of this.
It's, it's not really part of this.
This is strictly to, well, they're not, they can go apply to CPA.
Well, except that he mentions it in his application. That's why I was able to.
A couple of times.
Yeah, I understand, it's just that we're just giving him the authorization to do it.
Just sort of a semi-point of order here.
Go ahead.
It's probably out of bounds for discussion, but I would remind us all that, notwithstanding our prior discussion with Director Pina and the concerns I think some of us had about that amount, we nonetheless approved that as an initial amount on this, this grant cycle application, so that's right now is the number of record. I'm sure he's aware that we had concerns about it, that we would probably wanna come back and shrink that. He may be bound by environmental issues to do it anyway, but I think that, you know, for the purposes of this vote, I don't think it's, it's germane, because we've already voted to put this into the CDVG application anyway.
Yeah, it isn't, and we should be talking about the playground, which is what we're talking about, because that's what you're asking to add to this grant, so.
I, I, I would just say one quick thing on it, though, is that, that when, when you project a number for a project like a, like a parking lot, that's not the, just the cost for construction, it's still, it's the cost for design, it's the cost for oversight, it's the cost for the, uh, there's contingency in case there are issues when you uncover the ground, so there's other pieces involved. The actual cost for cons- at the end of the day, may be much less than four hundred thousand dollars.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think mentioning the parking lot's fine, because it's a requirement of this grant, that you have a hundred-car parking lot to supply. But I, I gotta go to the, I'm gonna go right to the park issue. I see Mrs. Slavin sitting in the back of the room there. You know, folks are, folks are really, um, we had to push people to get on board with our park study. We had to fight hard to get a park study done. We brought a park study group in, they, they did the, um, the design and all that stuff, right? Tens of thousands of dollars, we took money out of here for that, and then, you know, Mrs. Slavin has been coming before us now, she was here last week as a matter of fact, to talk about parks again, and we've been taking apart that study that was done and presented to the Parks and Recreation Group, CPA, and now here we go with a request from CEDAR to study a park. I don't get it. So I have an issue with that part of this, and four hundred grand, um, what is the actual number here? It says to piggyback on four hundred grand.
Six hundred.
Six hundred.
Well, a couple.
Six hundred.
From CPA.
Six hundred from CPA?
No, 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 four hundred. It's a four, it's a, it would be up to four hundred, am I correct?
No, it's six hundred from CPA, four hundred matched.
Well, six hundred, four hundred.
It's a million dollars altogether.
Hundred thousand amongst friends, right? I mean, we should know that.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know.
But it's not a study. We're not talking about a study, we're talking about a renovation.
There's no study gonna be done there?
No, we're talking about a renovation. In fact, we looked at the study from BL Companies, that's what I think is quoted in there. So we looked at the study and we used that study as a, as a, a starting point, but we understand that there's gonna be a public process, so I think, I wanna just pull everybody back on it, because we don't know the number, right? Those are the out, those are the upper limits, so the, so the question is, if you apply for the upper limit, you don't have to always take the money if you get it granted, if you, if your project comes in less, you can take less money. So, but if the project comes in at those numbers and people agree with it and support it, then you at least wanna have that on the table. So I think that's where we're trying to go with the, with the request.
Yeah, and, you know, and then, if you could address number nine, in terms of the maintenance.
Again, we don't know that at this point, because we don't know what the park looks like.
I'm sorry?
I said, we don't know what the maintenance would be, because we don't know what we have for a final design.
Right.
So the money, the, the money that we would request would allow us to design the park and build it. So what, what we would do is actually go through a public process to get a design, and then we would get a cost estimate at that point, get everybody on board, and then once we have that, then we could go forward and build it. So what we're, what we're suggesting here is, if we apply for the maximum amounts, and without knowing the design number, if we apply for the maximum amounts, then we have latitude in terms of what we wanna design, 'cause we can design up to those maximum amounts.
Normally what we do here, this is a two-part process for us. The first part, of course, is basically giving an okay to go before CPA to ask for funding. And our responsibility first in this, this part here is to make sure that the town is not gonna be encumbered by expenses or labor requirements that it can't handle. That's my concern that we're supposed to take care of, and I don't have any answers for that right now, because there's no explanation, because everything is kind of up in the clouds. I know the study was done for all the parks with actual playgrounds, to close certain ones, remodel others, there was dollar figures, I believe, put together, so I'm a little confused why we're asking for a million dollars for Lopes when the original project for Lopes, I don't think was anywhere near that from that study. I know there's a timeframe involved here and everything else, but I'm having a hard time voting to go ahead and move this forward, simply because we already have a project in place, we have another project that's substantially more money, and I can't justify it, and I also can't justify releasing it to the town to be responsible without knowing what, what the responsibilities are. This is supposed to come before us and let us know what the responsibilities of the town are gonna be, so we can say, sure, go ahead and apply, the FinCom says, go ahead, and then we can make a decision separately about whether we approve or disapprove the project for town meeting by saying we approve the article, uh, we don't approve the article, but right now I'm having a hard time signing off to go to the first step, 'cause I don't have any answers.
I believe, hold on, Judy was next, okay? Judy?
And then I'll go.
You wanna pass to Peter?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Peter, quickly.
Well, you know, in the paperwork here, it does state a deadline of July fifteenth. If there are questions, you know, Selectman Slavin has some, I think Selectman Holmes has some, uh, where they, that could be answered at a, at a future meeting, and still allow you time to submit the grant if, if we do go forward. I think that might be the way to go, to satisfy these members who, to have those concerns, so that's what I would suggest we do.
And if I might just tag on to Peter's comment there, and, and when we have that meeting, Patrick, would you invite CPA here so that we can have this discussion?
Open space.
And have all the play.
In fact, we can do that.
I think it says CPA.
Yes, but also open space was the one that did the study.
Okay, whoever's involved in this, so that we can have everybody in the same room and just have a, have a discussion before we.
Yeah, we can do that.
Because this says that it, it is likely, it is likely safe to assume that this project, once completed, would foster a heightened sense of community pride, and thus, the volunteers would maintain this.
Can't depend on that.
And that's not.
We actually had.
Because you can't use CPA money for maintenance.
When it was originally built, we had, had volunteers were gonna maintain it, if you remember correctly.
And that's important.
And it, and it never does. I mean, it, they, they last a certain length of time, and then, like anything else, you know, people change, people, things happen, and so on and so forth, so things do kinda quiet down a little bit.
So I'm in favor.
Although we have some new people now that have picked up the ball. If I'm not mistaken, right? We've got some people have picked up the ball, go ahead.
When Lopes was originally built, call it thirty years ago, there was in fact a maintenance fund set up that was to maintain it. I have no idea what happened to that amount of money, but it was a substantial amount of money in terms of, you know, making sure that, it would've been municipal maintenance or parks and playgrounds or whatever, would be able to maintain it. So there, in fact, at the beginning of this project, it was set up correctly. I happen to have a soft spot for this particular playground, but I really think that you need to talk with CPA, open space, municipal maintenance, um, finance committee, and capital planning, 'cause it is, it's a capital item. Yeah, so I think that you need to get some kind of, yeah, this is a great idea, no, this is a terrible idea, from those people. Okay, well, then, if it's not a capital item, it's not a capital item.
Proven of real estate.
It becomes, it's attached to the ground. You can't move it. So anyway, I happen to know, because I've done some homework on it, that there are two companies that actually specialize in renovating this particular brand of playground, and they are eager to deal with the town, and I would also suggest that you might get in touch with them, and I can give you the contact information. I'm guessing it's not gonna, my guess is, to bring it up to ADA standards and everything, it's not gonna come in nearly as high as you're thinking. However, if you're going to be incorporating a walking trail and some of the other things that we talked about, you know, passive recreation for the elderly, something you know, passive recreation for the elderly, something like that, then maybe your dollar information is correct. Again, I would ask you to communicate, cooperate, and then come back to us. Because I think it's a good idea. I'm just wary about the dollars.
Yeah, I think, and I guess I just want to be clear on this point. We don't have a design yet, right? So this money helps us build the design. So when we go through the design phase, that's when, when everybody's gonna know what it is that we all agree on, right? Because the funding, the funding is twofold. It's to help with the design and then help with the building. So my point here in looking at the high end is if we are fortunate enough to get the high end, then that gives us all that latitude. If we went in, let's say we went in at $400,000 and we had a 40% match, right, so that we so that we were looking at 40% of that and the remainder from CPA, then that's your upper limit. Then you capture upper limit without knowing what your design is. Do you see my point? So there's no commitment here. There's no commitment here on the part of the town at this point. It's just to go forward with the grant.
All right, you said that twice, so we understand, trust me. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, and my point on this again is that I believe that this has already been done. And we sat here and I would ask, I wouldn't ask us through the chair tonight, but when we put it in the invite, if we could ask Mrs. Slavin to bring that PowerPoint presentation back with her the night that we have this discussion. We've seen the plans, we've seen the pictures, we've seen the costs. We've seen all of this already. We've seen it all already. So why pay for a design again when we already have it? She has it. The committee has it. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, I would yield to the board's pleasure.
That's all. And that's what I mean. See, people come before the board and they make all these presentations. You haven't seen that presentation, I'm assuming.
I absolutely have. I've seen, I've read the report, sir.
So, and people aren't gonna agree with us spending money twice to do the same thing. Even though people think CPA money is free, it's not free. It's still taxpayer dollars.
Mr. Slavin, please.
Thank you.
My concern right now is because we've said one thing, we've kind of tracked back all the saying of study, is that I think we're rushing to get something done because we have a couple due dates. One, obviously, is CPA to apply, and the other one is the grant. You make the biggest mistakes in the world when you rush to do something. You really don't have a proper plan. And that concerns me a lot. I don't know what I'm voting on. I don't know what we're building. We have two different projects and I really feel this is being pushed in front of us because it was late getting to us. And we're now just gonna throw something in there without really having a plan proper. It's a lot of money. This town needs to spend its money wisely.
Mr. Titlebaum.
I think what I would encourage you to do is to look at your second and third paragraphs under number one and perhaps come up with a couple more layers of detail. And that would involve looking at the open space, the playground, the BNL report, referring to that, you know, saying that that report, you know, called for this, this, and this, and, you know, you are looking to do those things, plus additional things, fewer things, whatever it is. But I think if you dovetail that into here and you really amplify upon this information, then somebody like, you know, Selectman Slavin, Selectman Holmes, myself, the rest of the board, we can take a look at it and say, okay, this is what we think we can get for X dollars. I mean, look, it doesn't have to be perfect. We understand that the actual design, you know, you might lose an element here and there. We get that. It doesn't have to be the actual blueprint for what's gonna happen, you know, three years down the road when the project is completed. We understand all that. But when you're talking six-figure numbers, it is hard for us to get behind them without that level of, at least a deeper level of specificity, if you will. So I think that's what we're asking for here.
All right. Okay, so I'll try to put this on for two weeks because we're not meeting next week. So I'll put it on for two weeks.
Well, if I may, I'd like to go back and discuss it with the CETA board because they had asked us to go forward.
Okay.
So I'd like to go back and discuss it and see where they stand on it.
All right, so let us know then.
Okay.
All right.
I absolutely will. Thank you.
I can put it in the two-week meeting, okay?
Thank you.
When is their meeting, sir?
And at that point, we'll bring in CPA and open space.
Sure.
Go ahead. What else? Did you have something?
Well, yes, the question was, when is his board meeting?
I don't know.
He said June 1st.
First Monday.
First Monday.
June 1st, June 2nd.
So it would be the first meeting in June then, which is the 4th or something like that, right?
The meeting's the 2nd.
The 2nd, so it'll be the day after that.
Let me just before us.
We'll have to see how that works.
Yeah, I guess I would, I mean, are you saying that you think maybe your board would withdraw this?
I'm saying maybe I might recommend that. Because I think, you know, I don't want, the one thing I don't want to do is create conflicts in the work that we do. And if you, it sounds to me like you're all comfortable with what BL Companies did, so I'd like to go back and review that. And if you're comfortable with that and you have the funds to do it, then there's no need for us to pursue this. This is a lot of work on our part, not only in writing the grant, but then going through the process if we were successful in getting the grant to go through the design and public process phase. So I don't wanna, I wanna consider all of that before I go forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just one other thing, if I may. We got these, CETA donated some money to help with the tourism piece, and we developed these pocket guides working with a vendor. And I wanted to just share one with you. We just got them today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, that's kind of cool.
That is cool.
That is really cool.
Yeah, so these will be, these will be spread out at the hotels and other places throughout town. They'll also be at the visitor center. So we helped to sponsor those and I just thought it'd be nice for you to have a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I just thank you, thank you for your cooperation with the committee on this. We're very appreciative of it. And also, I'd like to praise you for the appearance of your Facebook page.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
That's very nice.
Thank you. Did you get the newsletter that we sent out as well?
We did.
Yes.
Good.
Very good.
Very nicely done.
Informative and very attractively designed.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Trying to see if we can open up communication.
Great, thanks.
All right. All right, next up is discussion of scheduling a joint budget meeting with the school and finance committee. Okay. So, from, we're not gonna meet next week, okay? And we're going to go to an every-other-week schedule during the summer. So we will be meeting, not next week, but the following week. We won't make it to next week. We'll go the following week, so on and so forth, from here on out. It's gonna go to every-other-week during the summer schedule. And I just want, the reason why I put this in here is I am gonna schedule a joint budget meeting with the school committee and the finance committee somewhere, maybe even twice during the time period that runs through the summer, so that we can get that budget process started or at least get some conversation going, okay? I will plan those probably on different days than our meeting, all right? So I just want you to be aware of that. And if anybody has a vacation time or whatever, if you could get it to me so I could plan it accordingly to make sure that everybody's there, that would be great, all right? And that way, everybody would be present for this, okay? That's the only reason why that's there, so that we can get some kind of semblance going, okay? All right, great. That's awesome. All right, next is the contract for Comcast. Now, since we're not meeting next week and we still haven't got a contract, we need to vote to disapprove the contract again so that we can start the 30-day clock moving again.
Yeah, just, I'll have to make a motion because it's kind of technical. But, you know, just to update the board, we're at the point now where the language differences have been ironed out. However, once again, there's a senior Comcast person who wasn't, I think this is the next level up from the last one, who was on vacation. They seem to do pretty well there with their vacations. I'll just make that observation on the record. So rather than have them try to rush a document for us to vote on this week, I figured it made more sense to try to get this done finally next month. But I believe we will actually do it.
Okay.
But don't blame me if we don't. We're ready. I don't, you know, we're dependent upon them. So I move to reissue a third preliminary denial and a 30-day extension of the Comcast contract.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Ms. Whiteside. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0. All right, thank you. All right. Any other town business not reasonably anticipated in the last 48 hours, Mr. Titlebaum?
None.
Ms. Whiteside.
Yes.
Yes. We had talked before about looking at a town-wide trash program to get a lower rate to our residents who don't use the CMAS program with a dump and stuff. And also to get a better rate for the town with the idea of possibly getting some dumpsters and stuff in key areas of the town to take care of the trash situation. I've got the contracts from Plymouth, which I want to use as a model. I'm gonna ask the board if it's okay with them if I sit down with the town administrator with all the paperwork I have and start to put something together, get an RFPO, just to see what kind of thing we get back to see if it's feasible or not.
Yeah, I think that's okay. That's fine with me. Steve, anybody have a question, problem with that?
No, sir.
No, go ahead. Go for it.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? How about you, Mr. Holmes? Anything on 24 hours? Nope? Okay, good. All right, town administrators' report, town administrators' report, okay. He has a report here. Could you read this into the record, please?
Certainly.
Judy Sodessig, how do you do?
This is the report from Derek D. Sullivan dated today. Item one, abandoned housing initiative. On June 4th, representatives from the state's attorney general's office, including the abandoned housing initiative director, will be in Wareham to meet with us regarding the abandoned housing initiative, AHI. Say that really fast. Here is a brief synopsis of the program. AHI was developed to provide a tool to communities to rid otherwise viable neighborhoods of blighted property. This program functions as a partnership between the attorney general's office and local communities to turn these properties around. To make these changes, the program employs the state's sanitary codes enforcement authority vested in the attorney general and individual cities and towns to seek out delinquent owners of abandoned residential properties to get the owner to fix his or her house. If the owner refuses, then we petition the housing court or the district court, depending on where the property is located, to appoint a receiver to bring the house up to applicable code. This is an excellent opportunity to use state resources to help fix a local issue. I'm being Mr. Sullivan, respectfully request that the board of selectmen nominate one member to attend the meeting. And number two, the onset village street sweeping. This week, we were able to hire a street street sweeper to sweep in the onset village area. The funding for this was provided by parking kiosk revenues. The program is actually being extended through Friday. So it is being really cleaned up. And I know that a lot of residents are concerned and aggravated and inconvenienced, but the sand is gonna be gone and it's gonna be great.
There's a lot of no parking areas right now.
Basically, the whole thing. Yep. So I guess that the street sweeping needs no action, but the AHI representative.
Where's the event?
Peter?
I recommend that Mr. Titlebaum be appointed.
Do you want to hear a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and staying, it's unanimous. Mr. Titlebaum, you're up.
Okay, and that is, you just put in the phone before, so it's my line.
I can't take that because you've got those things on it.
The time is, all right.
Street sweeping through Friday, yes.
Only supposed to be two days, I think, originally.
We only have one street sweeper and so we were able to, you know, hire another one, private contractor.
We've had issues. Yeah, no, there is. The problem is there's so much stuff that picking up the machines are overloading and blowing stuff up and breaking down, have to get fixed constantly.
And people should not be adding their trash, their leaf clippings or anything like that into the street. I mean, your street, your lawn clippings are not part of what's being picked up.
Right. Okay. All right, next up is liaison reports. Mr. Titlebaum, you're up first. Have you been liaising?
I'll be that. I'll let somebody else go first. I had something, but it slipped my mind.
Mr. Holmes. Mr. Slavin.
Oh, let's see. This past Thursday, Lieutenant Governor Polito came to Wareham at the library about 10 o'clock, spent just a little over an hour. We had representatives from, let's see if I can remember them all, Bourne, Marion, Rochester, Middleborough, Lakeville, Carver.
Bourne.
I said Bourne.
I think I said Bourne. Matt Apois, the town administrator there, did not make it, sent me a text. And the, actually, Freetown, which is a little out of the way, our former town administrator, Jack Healy, could not make it, who was hoping to come. There was approximately 12 or 13 questions I had put together, but each individual town went first. I did it by alphabetical order, so Wareham was last. By the time we got to us, most of the questions that we had put in there were asked, one question per town. Mr. Titlebaum, Representative Wareham, of course, he asked three rather than one, but that's the way it goes.
Home court advantage.
Yeah, home court advantage. And we'll be getting answers back. And I would expect to see Lieutenant Governor back probably in a month or two to follow up and stuff. They're very appreciative of all the stuff that we asked about. And it was, it was a good give and take. And what it did really, more than anything else, it set a base for future meetings. Everybody that was there said, we need to continue these meetings as a group. So it really worked out very well. It went very smoothly and I appreciate the other two selectmen being there to help as well. So I was pretty happy about that. I had my MPO meeting today, which is, does all the Southeast Mass, the 29 communities approximately for SERPA, all the road construction work and projects, including transportation, buses, et cetera. We're working between now and 2015 and 2019 on projects listing. In the coming year, Wareham has the bridge, really at the Wareham Marion Line, that's gonna be redone on Route 6. Still in the queue, not being moved. The Route 28 and Route 6 project that's been floundering for years, it's finally got put in place, will actually now almost exceed $18 million. Even though it was cut back to about two-thirds of the original. It will be done in the fiscal year 2017, which means it could start actually in the late 2016. And actually, it's gonna go over into a two-year cycle and will be in the 2018 budget as well. Approximately $14 million is dedicated to the first portion and $3.5 million to the second. Also, in the transportation projects for Gatra, for this coming year, Gatra has been assigned $60,000 for the bus station behind Merchants Way that we're waiting for final sign-off from the railroad. It gives us full ownership of that station back there, Merchants Way. And hopefully, that bus station will get put in place and actually running this year. And that's about all I have. Actually, I went to, one more thing. Bristol Community College provided us with an intern student for Matt in our IT GIS program. It's the second student we've had. The first one was from Bridgewater State. Between the two of them, we've got a tremendous amount of work done helping the town quite a bit. And our student was actually featured in their breakfast this morning at the school showing the co-op work program and how well it works. And he had pictures of him working in Wareham, et cetera. I was very happy to see that. That's it.
Mr. Titlebaum.
Well, I just wanted to go back to the event on Thursday with Lieutenant Governor. You know, Alan did a great job of putting this together and acting as sort of the emcee, if you will, and indeed hosting all of us. And I just wanted to commend him on the way he handled it. He had a whole bunch of people showing up with potential gripes. The conversation was spirited. Lieutenant Governor was very receptive to the issues we have here. It's nice to have the outreach from the executive branch of the state to this area. I think sometimes we tend to feel a little neglected down here. And I think her coming down and spending that time with us and promising to come back again shows that this administration is committed to getting out to some of the outlying areas and hearing what we have to say. She told us that she had served as a selectman previously. The governor had served as a selectman previously. I think that experience is very important in how they view their role as the chief executive officers of the state. They remember from whence they came and they're not forgetting the little people, and we appreciate that.
Ms. Whiteside.
Her most important comment, as far as I'm concerned, was, we are not going to be creating any unfunded mandates. In fact, we're going to be looking at getting rid of some of the unfunded mandates. I could have kissed her.
Yeah, we also brought up a very controversial point, which was prevailing wage. And they didn't sit there and run out the door when I said that.
Okay, anything else from you, Ms. Whiteside? All right, so we will move on to authorization to sign bills. And take us through that, please.
Yes, I have the minutes of May 8th, 2015. It was a special meeting for one-day license. I move that they be approved as presented.
Second.
Second, oh, second. All right, motion made.